All right. And we are at the time for student representative comment.
So, in the junior class meeting, they discussed junior prom, which will be on May 11th. They also discussed their charity, they decided on row-a-row for this year. So, it's, uh, there's a student, a statewide student government, and that's their state charity, so they're going to donate all the proceeds that they make this year to that state charity. And they're going to, they have two more fundraisers, they're going to look to do a jeans day in April, and the classic kiss the senior goodbye. And then for the seniors, they confirm prom colors, which will be navy and silver. They discuss the class song, the senior raffle, and then they're looking at doing a possible class gift for, which would be water fountains, and also discuss the t-shirt designs. As for the executive board, they further discuss Spike Night, which is the charity volleyball game with, who's with Central, so they're looking more to that and looking at the possibilities for that, along with the talent show, which is tomorrow at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. Admission is $5, and doors open at 5:30. So if you're looking for something to do tomorrow, come out and support your local students here, and unsung hero.
So February's unsung hero award is presenting to Blake Scanlon for his positive attitude and dedication to LTHS. Blake is involved in many clubs, including STA, Interact, Ada, and Fishing Club. Additionally, Blake dedicates his time in the spring sports season to managing the girls' softball team. He is always willing to volunteer his time to help with events going on around the school. Blake is an extraordinary honor student, and balances his responsibilities well. Consequently, Blake is a member of the National Honor Society, and you can see him assisting peers in the classroom, and constantly giving an effort to better the days of those around him. Wherever Blake is, he is always bursting with team spirit and school pride. Blake pushes himself to excel in his classes, and always challenges himself to be an even better version of himself. It is for these reasons that Blake Scanlon has been selected to receive February's unsung hero award. So if you're here, come on down and receive your award.
That's it for us.
And now to the report of the superintendent. Okay. I would like to start tonight's meeting by asking all of us here that are present for a moment of silence in memory to the seventeen lost lives in the tragedy at Marjory Stone of Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. Thank you. We were gonna address a little bit later in our, in my comments, a little bit about what's going on with school security, but I'm glad that everyone's here tonight. We're also here to, for some, some very good recognitions. First of all, I'd like to recognize the artwork that's back up this month from Isabel Loyola and Mia Bukczynski, great Fort Cedar Creek, their wonderful artwork. If you're having a bad day, I look at my wall in my office, which we've had a collection of artwork now since the covers have started, since I've been here, and it really has lightened up the, my, uh, my day in my room, so it's beautiful. Also like to thank both, or not, not just both, but our teaching staff, our custodial staff, our health offices, and all of our workers, working with our families through the recent and, and current cough and flu season, which has hit pretty hard. Uh, we, I know we've distributed information from the CDC, it's been shared and posted as a resource to our families, and as I always say, if you're sick, stay home. The best thing we can do is take care of ourselves, good hygiene, and those universal precautions, cover our nose, wash our hands, traditions that are steadfast for getting rid of and preventing the spread of the flu. So we, we want to thank our offices and our staffs for working through that. Hopefully, we've seen the peak of that, but I know it has a few more strong weeks left, and we're enduring through that. Like, thank once again our, our maintenance custodians for doing an extra great job on keeping our services clean, but as we all know, it just takes one infected hand after you wipe that with a wipe to start the cycle all over again. So they do a lot of good work there, and we're proud of them. I, we did mention previously, and it's posted on the website, that the DOE performance reports are out for the year sixteen, seventeen school years, and that information is out on the website. Understand that at a certain point, I know Dr. Clark is working on some more detailed reports in regard to our performance, and we do want to share that. And I think as, as a result, we were rated from our Q Sac, a recent evaluation, as a high-performing district, so we want to make sure that we celebrate and recognize that. At this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Pam Pachaccio from the First T Program. It's a national school program here in New Jersey. It's a, to present four grants to our elementary schools from the First T Grant.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Uh.
Good? Okay, thank you. Uh, the First T of the Jersey Shore is very happy to present the Lacey School District with four national school programs. The grant was awarded to you as part of our service area, and the grant is worth to, to the full value of each school of $20,000. So we are very happy to be partnering with your school district. As the First T continues to grow south, this is one of our main focuses coming into 2018 and 2019, and I'm very happy to be partnering with the school district. The First T for you, for anyone who doesn't know who we are, usually if you're a golfer, every other commercial is focused at the First T. If you don't watch the Golf Channel, then you really don't know too much about it. But we are a youth development program that deliver nine core values through the game of golf. So our main focus is character education, because we found through the years with children, this is some areas that they lacked. So if you look at what a golfer is, and what we would strive for all our children to be, we would want them to be honest, and have integrity, and persevere, and understand sportsmanship, and through the game of golf, all of this is laid out for you. So the First T does the national schools program, where the school is awarded a fantastic band of equipment, and being a former phys ed teacher, I can guarantee you are going to love it. And it's called snag equipment, and it's enough equipment for a class of thirty children. We also supply the full curriculum that was written by several people in the field of education, and it is one of the best curriculums in the field that I have seen. Also, with the package, it also comes with a full training opportunity and full support from our chapter. Dr. Clark and I have already discussed possibilities of having some Energizer Days, where a guest coach comes in from the chapter, maybe myself, or one of my team, come in and spend a little time with the kids, maybe do a competition, some sort of Energizer, to get the kids really excited about the sport, and to get the teachers energized as well. I welcome any questions about the program at this point, but we are so, so happy to award it to you, and I truly look forward to rolling it out and partnering with you. So far, it's been a pleasure dealing with you, Dr. Clark, so I know moving forward, it's, it's going to be even better.
Thank you. If I could, I'd like to invite all of our phys ed teachers that are here, and our elementary principals, elementary phys ed, and principals to take a picture, if you would.
Oh, thank you.
If you would stand right here, it'd be wonderful. I just wanted to know if she could teach the board members how to play golf.
One more over here. Thank you so much. Are you attending the acre conference? You may get lunch on Jersey night, so you get to spend some time with me. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
Now, we're gonna, uh, turn the program off to, over to our principals, are gonna do some recognition. We're gonna start off with Students of the Month, and then a special recognition from Mr. Brandis, and then our three sustainability grants from, from our Mill Pond School, and Oak Harbor, and the high school. But we're gonna start with our Students of the Month, and Mr. Brandis.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggly. I first like to recognize February's Senior of the Month, Sophia Chang. Please come down and join me. Congratulations. As she walks down, I'd also like to congratulate her parents for attendance tonight, congratulations to them as well. At this time, we're gonna watch her video and all her accolades.
Good evening, I'm Greg Brandis, principal of Lacey Township High School, and here we're gonna celebrate Sophia Chang, Senior of the Month for February, congratulations. And here to celebrate her accomplishments is Cody Carpenter.
Congratulations, Sophia, on Senior of the Month. How does it make you feel?
I feel really proud of my accomplishments.
That's really good. So, um, what are your plans after high school?
I plan on going to college for environmental engineering, and kind of going from there.
Okay, do you know any specific college you are interested in?
I'm interested in Stevens Institute of Technology, I'll probably go there, actually, probably my talent choice.
Okay, awesome. So what are your hobbies outside of school there?
Uh, I like to draw, I like reading too, actually.
It's really fun. So, um, do you have any teachers around the high school that you would say really helped you grow?
I like Mr. Rada, I had him freshman year, junior year, and this year, and I feel like every class I've taken with him is better than the last one.
Congratulations, Sophia, on Student of the Month. Really proud of all your hard work and, and dedication you've had here at Lacey Township. You're a talented and hardworking student, and I look forward to hearing about all your successes as you move on to study environmental engineering.
Good luck, and congratulations.
Congratulations again, Sophia. I'd also like to now call up Luke Guthier, our February Senior of the Month. Come down and join me, please. Congratulations to his family members as well, remarkable accomplishment. At this time, we're gonna watch a video on Luke's many accomplishments as well.
Good evening, we're back here with Luke Guthier, Senior of the Month for February, congratulations. And here to celebrate his accomplishments is Michaela Russeter.
I'm here to celebrate Luke Guthier's award of winning Senior of the Month. How, what does this award mean to you?
I feel very honored to be selected for this award among my peers.
What are your hobbies outside of school?
Outside of school, other than wrestling, uh, I just like to be outdoors, whether that's surfing in the summer, or mountain biking in the spring and fall. I just like to do things, um, outside and be active.
What are your plans after you graduate high school?
After I graduate, I plan to attend the United States Merchant Marine Academy, where I will study marine engineering.
Throughout years of high school, who has inspired you or influenced you the most?
I gotta give it to Mr. Kuzon, that guy's been with me for four years, got a respect for that, but, and I'll say this, Miss, he's really helped me a lot, not just in STEM, but, um, in, in my work ethic and motivation for my schoolwork as well.
I've had Luke for four years in the STEM Academy. Focus and drive is what really sets Luke apart from his peers in the academy. Whether he's using that to gain over a hundred wrestling match wins, as he did last month, or he's using that focus and drive to get a nomination to one of our service academies, which he's had also. When he knows what he wants, there's nothing that gets in his way. He's one of the hardest-working kids that I know, and I wish him much success in the future, and he should be proud of all his accomplishments.
What are your achievements throughout your wrestling career?
Uh, last year, I was very proud to make it to the state tournament by placing second in Region Seven. Uh, this year, some of my favorite accomplishments were winning the short conference tournament and achieving, achieving by one hundred points.
Oh, congratulations on winning Senior of the Month.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Now I'd like to introduce Vocational Senior of the Month, David Costadina. Congratulations to his family as well, remarkable accomplishments, congratulations. At this time, we're going to watch David's accomplishments, and please observe his, uh, fashionable wardrobe that he designed and created himself, correct?
Yes.
Hello, we're here with Vocational Student of the Month, David Costadina. Congratulations for February, and here to celebrate his accomplishments is Michael McMurder.
Hi, I'm your February Senior of the Month, David. How's it feel? It feels great. What do you do at Vocational School? Um, design, make clothing, and learn about the whole fashion industry. It's really cool, did you make that jacket? Yes, I did. What's your favorite teacher at the high school? Uh, Miss G, my sophomore year, environmental science teacher.
I had Dave for environmental science his sophomore year, and Dave was awesome. He was always willing to participate in class discussions, and always asking really interesting and thought-provoking questions, and he was just overall an awesome asset to the science classroom. I'm really proud of Dave and everything that he's accomplished so far, and it's really nice to see him so passionate about something that he's doing, so I'm excited to see what the future has in store for him.
Do you have any future plans? Uh, yes, I want to attend college and learn more about venture design. Congratulations on Senior of the Month. Thank you.
All right, thank you, congratulations to all our award winners. At this time, we rarely get to celebrate the accomplishments of, um, not only our students, but our staff as well, so we try to take opportunities that we find are remarkable and truly worth celebrating. And at this time, Angela and Jerry, I'm not sure if you've figured out that, um, if you gain tenure, you don't necessarily have to be at the faculty meeting, but the board, uh, the staff, the administration, wanted to welcome you here tonight to celebrate all your accomplishments and everything that you have achieved in not only Lacey, but in your lifetime. Uh, let me briefly take you down, Jerry and Angela's, uh, journey, uh, to where we are today. Jerry and Angela are from Caracas, Venezuela. They were met during their college years. Soon after that, they were married, had two daughters, Geraldine and Sheila. Nearly seventeen years ago, Jerry answered an advertisement in the local newspaper that was asking for Spanish teachers to come to the United States to teach. Jerry had answered that ad, and a few days later, had a phone interview. Jerry was hired, got a work visa, and the family of four took the four-hour, um, plane ride to the United States. Jerry made his home at Central Regional High School for ten years, creating personal relationships with colleagues, administration, and with students. Jerry received a recognition from the superintendent and his peers, earning him Teacher of the Year. Unfortunately, the following year, because of budgetary restraints, and his ability to only be working with a visa, made him lowest on the seniority, and his position was unfortunately cut. However, Central's loss was Lacey's gain. We sit here on February twenty-two, two thousand eighteen, with Angela and Jerry serving as educators at Lacey Township High School and the middle school. For about ten years apiece, Senor Ving is a passionate educator and admired by his students. Fun fact, he's the leader in the district in tweets. I try to follow him. I, uh, I can't, I can't read them all, because they're in Spanish, but I certainly look forward to them when I see them. And I know his students too, as well. Angela is dual-certified in Spanish and in French, and she's an asset to the World Language Department and the high school, and we greatly appreciate them. We often overlook what our colleagues have to endure to reach a level of stability in their lives, because the American dream, so to speak, is more easily obtainable than for others. I proudly stand here before you tonight to celebrate the accomplishments of Jerry and Angela. I'm not only a proud person here tonight, sharing in my sentiments are Jerry's children, Sheila, um, sorry, Geraldine, their grandchildren, Violet and Lucy, supervisor Paul O'Neal, and a lot of their colleagues. So they are here to join you tonight, Jerry and Angela. After sixteen years living in the United States, this past month, Jerry and Angela became United States citizens. They have more love for this country than anybody I've ever met. They also have a passion and love for Lacey Township. Uh, I've had many passionate conversations with Jerry in the hallways, and I can say it means more to Jerry, not only to earn his citizenship, but to gain tenure, and earn it. Nothing is given to you, sometimes in our, uh, in, uh, social views, tenure's a bad word, but we gotta remember, teachers earn it, and they have more than earned it. And again, his passionate conversations, he's more proud not only to be a U.S. citizen, but a permanent fixture in the Lacey family and community. So, congratulations, Jerry, congratulations, Angela. Please join us, and follow us.
Oh my God, you have flowers!
Congratulations.
Oh my goodness, that's so beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Congratulations again.
Yes, we're gonna, we have three New Jersey Sustainability Grants that we're gonna now begin with presentations from Mr. Brandis, then Mr. Suboko, and then Mr. Brewer.
Thank you again, Mr. Wiggly. Um, there's a district initiative to be a New Jersey Sustainable District and Schools. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the administration and staff throughout the district who worked so hard to make our schools green and sustainable. Uh, the Green Team at the high school works diligently to, uh, try to be as green as possible through recycling, through as little things as putting stickers on the light switches to remember to turn them off, to managing bottle-the-class games, so you can, uh, get the most recyclables as possible. But just recently, they, uh, our Green Team has led the way in getting five, uh, water bottle stations, refillable water bottle stations in the high school. That project is worth about $10,000. With the Green Team's leadership, with, uh, STA, and the support of PTSA and boosters, we were able to, uh, fund all that money through, uh, also a New Jersey Sustainable Grant. So at this time, I'd like to stand and recognize Karen Hobson, Sue Penna, and Kathy Robinson to please be recognized. The high school thanks you, I look forward to the water bottle stations, and, um, and thank you for all your hard work. At this time, I'm going to ask Ed Suboku to come up and give the next presentation. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Brandis. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Melissa Roth to join me at the podium. Uh-huh. Come on down. Thank you. They're saying that one person's act of kindness can improve the world is true. Ms. Melissa Roth was kind enough to volunteer to write the sustainable jersey for schools' grant for the Mill Pond School. The grant will replace broken water fountains with new water bottle refilling stations to reduce the amount of waste produced by using plastic water bottles. Students will actually have the opportunity to track and explore their everyday water use, and the waste that comes from using one single water bottle, and the detrimental effects it has on our environment. These water bottle filling stations will offer Mill Pond students and staff cold-filtered water throughout our building. The stations offer a healthy hydration option that will also reduce waste. Ms. Roth deserves all the credit for writing and winning the grant that took her two full weekends to write, of her own time. I want to thank Mr. Schleyenheft, our head custodian, working hand-in-hand, arm-in-arm, with Ms. Roth, for organizing the installation of four water bottle filling stations in Mill Pond. I am very, very proud of you, and I'm very, very thankful for your volunteerism that seems bottomless. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce the principal of the Oak Harbor School, Mr. Jeff Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Suboko. With me is Jody Hughes, uh, she is our monthly handicap teacher at Lenoke, and she's also our lead teacher on the Sustainable Grants as well. Without repeating everything that Mr. Brandis and Mr. Suboko said, uh, Lenoke as well is looking at a filling station. Uh, we were able to incorporate the, the efforts of our, our PTO this year, and as part of our, our spirit sales and, and gifts to the fourth graders, uh, we're gonna incorporate water bottles to, again, try to bring home the initiative and the importance of, of going green with the refillable stations, and trying to create stewards in the environment as they progress and move through the district to these other schools that are also working through these grants. I, I can't say enough, and, and praise Mrs. Hughes enough, the, the hours and the effort that go into this. It is a very lengthy process, it is very arduous, uh, the amount of paperwork that she had to file, present to us, um, a, a lot of time goes into this that I, I can't thank her enough. One hundred percent of the credit goes to her, we were there in a support role, it was something that she took on outside her classroom duty, so I just want a big thank you. Going forward, just to show just how much passion she was in this, she's already begun the application for next year's Sustainable Grant as well. Hopefully, we receive the $2,000, but we're gonna shoot for that $10,000 as well, so, again, Mrs. Hughes, great job, congratulations. And before I leave, I just have to throw a quick shout-out to, uh, Mr. Valcias and Ms. Angela Rojas. As, as a parent this year, I want to vouch for everything Mr. Brandis said, and as former colleagues, um, as, as they worked with my son this year, and he comes home nightly and speaks very highly of Mr. Valcias, so, uh, thank you again, thank you guys for having us up here.
So we, we started this evening's events off with a moment of silence, recognition of, um, seventeen sad losses down in Florida. In the interim, the past few days, over since then, we've seen quite a bit of, um, media and press and, and actions, um, but I want to just, you know, share with the public here and the people in attendance at the meeting tonight, that this Board of Education, the central office administration, our district administration, have been progressively addressing our security protocols, making changes along the way, um, not in isolation, but with law enforcement, our local PD, Chief Dabella, um, working with our liaisons with the township committee, that we are, we're doing it collaboratively, uh, we're doing it smart, and, um, and while doing that, we're also smart in what we are sharing and what we are not sharing. Some things that we can't discuss are, you know, they're, they're appropriate, some things that we don't, you know, there's a reason for that too. As we all know, people are watching, and people are taking... As we all know, people are watching, and people are taking notes on what you're doing and what you're not doing. I assure you that our buildings are secure, I assure you we have a, a sound process for entering our buildings, and I assure you that there's a presence there that some people don't know is there. And I think that's one of the points of pride here in Lacey is that people take care of each other in town, understand that rash, quick decisions and recommendations that are sweeping that we're hearing are going on elsewhere will be well thought out here with board support and with communication with local law enforcement. That will lead into something that we've already been progressively addressing in the district, which is a program called ALICE. Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. ALICE, the acronym, not in that particular order, which is a skillset that we have adopted and that we are training our staff prior to this past incident, but also currently. And the program has been, I think, well-received, it exists in other districts not too far from here. It is a protocol for an active shooter response in a classroom, unlike anything that I ever had when I was a, a teacher in the classroom, where we would shut the blinds, turn the lights out, and huddle in the corner. Those days are gone. Those days are gone, and we can see some of the results of, of that practice elsewhere in our country. So, just so people understand what it is, I did one on Dr. Clark, who has done a great job initially securing ALICE as a, as an agency to, to support our training, but also has been on the ground floor of its work. So, Dr. Clark?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wiggly. So yeah, we are really excited to bring ALICE to our school district. We are hard at work training all of our staff members. We have a very dedicated ALICE team, some of our members are here in the audience, I see Ms. Nemic, and Lieutenant Sullivan, and Detective May, our school resource officer, they're both on our ALICE team, and they are part of the team that is conducting the training. So what does that really mean? Back in October, we had a professional development day for the entire district staff, and that provided the entire district with a two-hour overview of what ALICE is and what ALICE is not. And what we watched were some pretty heart-wrenching videos, we listened to some heart-wrenching videos of things that have happened in the United States, unfortunately, related to active shooter activity. I'd like to tell you that those statistics are decreasing, instead they're increasing. And so, we've been talking about ALICE for quite some time, and this is the year where we decided that we were going to start. And so, after the district staff participated in the two-hour overview back in October, we started in, about two weeks ago, doing what we call scenario training. So it's not enough to just listen to it, you have to participate in those, in those scenarios to understand what the options are. And like Mr. Wiggly said, he provided you the, the acronym, it's not linear, we're not saying, and ALICE does not say that we have to use those measures in any particular order, it's giving people options to decide what measure, what strategy would be right for that moment. And the reason we're talking about this tonight is it's very important for our parents to understand that we're not keeping you in the dark, because what we are going to do very soon is announce a date where we're going to invite our families in, most likely to the auditorium, we'll make the announcement of the location, so that we can provide that same overview to our families. Because after we're done training our staff members, then becomes the next step, the next step is to train our students. And that's going to look quite different for a kindergartner than it's going to look for a high school student, because we have to approach things that are age-appropriate, we have to approach the strategies and make them age-appropriate. Fortunately, ALICE has done that for us already, and they have a entire curriculum that they've provided for teachers to be able to work with the younger students, for teachers to be able to work with the middle school students, and for teachers to be able to work with the high school students as well. We will be part, and when I say we, the ALICE team, with the support of this entire Board of Education, we will be their lockstep, helping our teachers turnkey what they've learned in that two-hour overview and then in that scenario training. So we look forward to putting that together, it's going to be very soon, we will do an automated call, we will post the information on our website, and we will send text messages as well as reminder as the date comes close. So, we're excited about it. I can't say we're excited in a good way, because it's a, it's a, it's a necessary thing that we have to do in response to what's going on around us, and as Mr. Wiggly said, the safety of our students and staff is always at the forefront of our attention, so.
Thank you. And I know, Mr. Giordano had the, the time to come out, he spent and observed a little bit of our training, I, I won't put him on the spot, but you give a little impression, and I know that you're gonna, so, why don't you share as a board member, because he, he was, he, he came in and saw a little bit of what was going on.
Sure, so, you know, as Dr. Clark said, the safety of the students and the staff of our district is first and foremost of this Board of Education. So, after the unfortunate events of last week, I had wanted to go see one of these trainings, and I just felt like I, I just had to go and participate and, and see what took place. And, you know, as I watched teachers enter the classroom before the training, and I won't get into details, you could see the apprehension and the fear and, and just, you know, and it's, this is the real world that we live in today. So, the fact that, you know, this administration had the foresight to look at this progressive, progressive methodology and bring it in district, I think, is commendable. But, one thing I noticed as, after the training was the confidence that the staff had. In the event that if something like this were to happen, they felt, I, I felt that they felt that they were better prepared to deal with it. So, you know, that in and of itself gave me a good feeling that we're doing everything that we possibly can to, you know, to protect our students, protect the staff, and address these challenges head-on as best we can, so.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for, for coming out, we're, we are, we have invited the rest of the board to come in and, and either participate and/or overview too, so that be, so that everybody can get a, a feel for what's going on. So that, that, that was a big, you know, important piece I wanted to share at this meeting. Before we go on to end our section, I did want to go to Mr. DeGeorge and get an update on our current budget process. Mr. George?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Wiggly, and good evening, everyone. Since the last time you spoke about the 2018, 2019 school year budget at our October meeting, a lot has happened in what may end up being the most impactful event. State Senator Paul Sarlo Berg in the Fosa County's sponsored Senate Bill Number 1248, which seeks to extend the statutory date of the governor's annual budget address from the Fourth Tuesday in February to March 13th, 2018. If the legislation is successful, then it would logically result in all related budget submission dates being pushed back two weeks as well, more to come on that. Regarding the budget itself, we take a look at the revenue side. At sixty-seven percent of our total operating budget, current year property taxes of just over forty-five point five million dollars continues to be this district's chief source of revenue. At thirty-one percent of the total operating budget, current year state aid of just over twenty-one million dollars continues to be this district's second major source of revenue. Although, we don't know for sure what Governor Murphy will end up doing with state aid, we ought not be surprised if the amount received is no more than or even less than the net amount of state aid we received this year. On the appropriation side of the budget, that's the items we spend our money on, the story, the most critical issue continues to be the rising, soaring, skyrocketing cost of health benefits, which is projected to increase about fifteen percent by January of 2019. So here's the thing, a two percent increase on the property tax levy we just spoke about is not even close enough to cover the projected increase in health benefits cost. Please be assured that the district staff and the board is working very hard to address the issue. In fact, last year, the board created a subcommittee led by Mr. Morandi to come up with a suitable alternative to the current structure as well as the lower cost for health benefits. What happens between now and the presentation and adoption of the tentative budget, which at least for now is scheduled for March nineteenth? Unless S-1248 is passed, the governor will deliver his budget address on February 28th. Regardless of the date of the address, within forty-eight hours afterward, the district will find out how much state aid it will be getting next year. For now, Mr. Wiggly, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. DeGeorge. I know that's gonna be some interesting news, and we'll be keeping a very close eye on both the board, I'm sure the public. That concludes at this point my, my points for, until we go to public comment, but I do, I know there's some people here to promote and celebrate Red Night Out, and I, I can't wait to hear the plans for that. I know we're, we've been talking quite a bit, and it's gonna be a big event, so I look forward to hearing that in public comment. Which is exactly where we are, pal. We're there. And if you guys would like to start first, that would be great.
I'm Heather Scanlon, and I'm with the Lacey Municipal Alliance as well as the Lacey Task Force, and yes, we are here to promote our, our Red Night Out. But first, let me just say, the alliance has been around for many, many years, but the task force was created about six years ago, and that was really due to the, the increasing rates of deaths due to heroin overdoses, as well as other drug overdoses. But, we, unlike other towns, decided that we had to really face the problem head-on. We also knew that many of these heroin, many of the heroin addicts or the addiction starts with just abusing prescription medications. So our goal was to raise awareness in our community. And about a year later, we had our first Red Night Out, and it was so well-attended, no one had ever expected the amount of people that would come out for a program. Previous years, you were lucky if you had a dozen people who came out to, to hear about drugs. As I said, other towns had a problem, but they chose to just not deal with it. So this was the first time that really anybody had come out publicly. So that year, we really wanted to raise awareness. The second year, we decided, we heard from people, and they wanted to know, well, where can we go to get help? So, the second year, we offered resources. The third year, we decided we wanted to ask parents to become part of the solution. This year, we're doing something a little bit differently. This year, we decided to focus on our, some of our student athletes. However, this program is really for all students, as well as their parents. Because, you know, they all face pressures every day, and they can, this can result in engaging and risky behavior. You know, we, we heard about so many of the accomplishments of our students, and we want to make sure that they have the opportunity to fulfill all their dreams. So we want to spare parents the pain and the anxiety of having to deal with a student, child, who's addicted. So this has been a collaborative effort with the school district, very involved, and the police department, as well as the church and our business community. So this year, we're, our headlining event is going to be Frankie Edgar, who some of you probably know. I, I never heard of him before, until plans for this night, but they tell me that he's a, been a champion MMA, mixed martial arts, I don't know if I'm saying that right. So he will be there, I don't know if anybody else is gonna help him, he might do a demonstration. We hope to have somebody here helping him.
I think we have someone too.
Who happens to be sitting up there.
Look, Mr. DeGeorge?
I was, I, I was not gonna raise my hand, but yeah, I'll be there.
But Mr. DeBlas will be there, thank you, assisting Frankie. We understand though that he has a fight.
Yeah, so he's fighting the week before. And like, if you guys don't know Frank, like, no matter whether he wins or loses, like, something is getting smashed in his face. All right, so, God willing, he'll be okay. I think he will be, I, I talked to him thoroughly, and I was like, "Listen, man, are you sure you can do it? Are you sure?" And he said he could do it. I think he's taking it as like a challenge, he thinks we're gonna actually like really wrestle on the stage, but...
So you're gonna be there with him?
Yeah, I'm gonna be literally thro- like, he's very small, so I can put him in my pocket, actually. So, I'm gonna, uh, yeah, you can tell my, you can, this is, this is live Frank, if you're watching, this is what it is, man. You know, so, yeah, I'll be there with him, and we'll be going over some things and, you know, having some fun.
Well, I did see him at, at Brick High School, and we're very honored that he's able to come and share what his journey has been and how he's been successful. We also have Keith Elias, who many of us know, one of our own students here, and a former NFL player, and he's a very, very good motivational speaker, so he'll be speaking. Just want to go over a couple of things, we will have childcare, and we will have lots of door prizes, but the childcare we're offering as well, pizza, beverages before the program. However, we encourage you to be registered for that, especially childcare, we really need to be prepared, so we're urging everyone to register. Call, there's a number on the fly or the recreation department to call to register. So, and if Frankie doesn't do well, maybe you can pick somebody else up there to help you out?
We're, we're gonna get the job done, for sure. We'll figure it out.
But we sincerely hope that parents will come out, as well as our students, to hear this very important message. Thank you.
Heather, what was the date again?
Oh, March ninth. And a little plug out to my nephew, unsung hero here.
There you go.
Yeah, there's a sign.
Anybody else for, uh, no?
I, I think she's, wait, I think she's volunteering to go MMA.
Maybe. I'll be there.
Regina D'Asenza, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. As you just heard from Mrs. Scanlon, on Friday, March ninth, the Lacey Township Municipal Alliance invites the community to take a visible stand against substance abuse and prevention known nationally as Red Night Out. One of the reasons I wore red for the three years I was on the board was for Red Night Out awareness. R-E-D is for raising and educating a drug-free community. The United States Drug Enforcement Administration began red ribbon awareness in 1985. Initially known as Red Ribbon Week, many communities later sponsored Red Night Out. The DEA began this campaign in memory of an agent, Kiki Enrique Camarena. He was tortured and killed by Mexican drug lords who found out his true identity while he was working undercover. In 1985, I had graduated with my degree in criminal justice and was a DEA applicant for a special agent position in Newark. When the news of Mr. Camarena's murder hit print, I immediately withdrew my application from the DEA. I was much too scared to take the job. I also became more than committed to stay away and prevent others from abusing and using illegal drugs. Drugs ruin lives, there is no positive aspect to drug abuse. I've never used drugs of any sort, and I'm living proof that you can go through life without drugs or alcohol. Why put your body through the paces of processing these substances when there is enough pollution in the air we breathe to contaminate us? People simply hasten their death with any drug, and this includes the Happy Weed. I met a mom a few years ago who told me she was waiting for news about her critically ill son, age fifty, younger than me, with severe heart disease. I asked her, "How did he get such severe heart disease at such a young age?" She told me drugs, and marijuana was one of the drugs he abused regularly. Shocking, right? Just like smoking cigarettes, but marijuana is worse because of the THC. If I ever ends up in the cardiac intensive care unit, I'd rather it be from natural causes than self-inflicted. My grandfather suffered five heart attacks from smoking, started when he was a kid. No matter how hard we tried to stop him, he refused to give up his cigarettes. Addiction is an awful disease. Parents must be vigilant at all times to prevent their children from getting involved with illegal substances, and one way is to learn the lingo, know the street names, kids use other words to discuss drugs. The presentations by the speakers at Red Night Out will alert and assist parents in knowing the signs and symptoms to look for. Prevention is key. Once addicted, it is very hard to get out from under. The threat of relapse is very real. I recently read two books by Mackenzie Phillips, former TV actress of an old series, One Day at a Time. If anyone watched it, you might have noticed, it ran from seventy-five to eighty-four. This actress was drug-addicted while working on This actress was drug-addicted while working on the show. Her weight loss and symptoms of addiction were visible while she was filming the sitcom. She was asked to leave twice, fired, rehired, relapsed, and fired again. Her books, High on Arrival and Hopeful Healing, describe some of the most unbelievable circumstances that she lived through while high on drugs. Shooting cocaine and heroin almost every 20 minutes for years. She had her drug dealers move into her house at one point, so she never had to leave the house to get drugs and get high. It's amazing that she lived to tell her story, but she did almost die a few times from overdoses, and this was before the days of Narcan. Both of these books are available in our local library. The school district cannot replace parental vigilance, but Lacey is doing all it can to help students and parents. We have guidance counselors, an SRO, School Resource Officer, and random student drug-testing in place. I cringe whenever I hear people say, "So what? It's only marijuana." Wake up. Marijuana has the power to kill you, too. Don't ever say, "So what? It's only marijuana." Be there March 9th, and be aware, always. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi.
Hi. How are you?
First time here. My name's Valia Russell. I live at 109 Sunlines Boulevard. And I came here, really just to speak for moms, well, parents in general, since everything that's happened recently, emotions were running high. And I just said, you know, I, I'm, it's really important, I want to go, I want to be a voice. My children backed me up on it. My daughter was sobbing along with me last Thursday morning before school. How do I send her to school? Just total fear, for the first time. And now, hearing, I'm so glad I came, because a lot of the things that I wrote down to say, you've answered already for me, and that's kind of taken a little bit of a weight off the unanswered questions I had in my head. So I, I won't keep anyone, but I, I just want to extend my gratitude for your efforts. It's, it's well-appreciated if our kids are safe, and our teachers, my sister's a teacher. I personally thanked that officer this morning, outside the high school, and said, "Be safe," more than ever. So I don't, I actually don't have any more questions. I'm excited to learn more about this Alice program once you all get into it further. And, you know, I'm looking forward to, you know, us being safer as a community and our kids being able to be happy at school and not afraid. So, anyway, I just, I wanted to speak for everyone, hopefully. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay. We will move on to board member comments. And change it up a little bit, we'll start down. Mr. Riggs?
I'd like to thank our Students of the Month, Luke and Sophia. Good luck, Sophia and Stevens. Good luck, Luke, at the Merchant Marines. You two look like you really got it together. Good luck out there. David Costadina, it's a pretty cool jacket, I think you're going to be all right, too. Good luck at that Institute of Technology, Fashion Institute of Technology. And Blake Scanlon, the Unsung Hero Award, congratulations to you, too. All the teachers that are working on the sustainability grants, the water filling stations. Great work, everybody, thanks. Thanks for that. It's, you know, awesome stuff for the school, you know, keeps the waist down, and, I don't know, just great to get the kids involved and all that sort of thing. And to Mr. Valacios and Ms. Roas, the tenure and the U.S. citizenship, very cool. Congratulations. Thanks.
Mr. Marandy?
Thank you. First of all, just to keep a little going on, the secure tragedies, unfortunately, happen all the time. And it's good to see the administration was actually proactive on this. This Alice training was done prior to this tragedy. And let us assure parents, okay, most of us have kids in the school system, okay? The number-one priority is to get the kids to school, to learn, and get them home, okay? There's no price tag on things that we need. This year, we implemented the SRO officer. And the administration did make changes. You know, back prior years past, people coming in these schools constantly, in and out, picking up the kids at all times of the day. There's changes now, okay? We're securing, we're, we're doing further things for security, okay? You know, as soon as this tragedy happened, social media, okay? We don't have security in here, okay? Some people like, "Yes, we have officers here." "Oh, we never see them." Well, no, why? Things are planned, you know? We can't show our hand all the time. Like Superintendent Wiggly said, the last thing you want to do is show your hands, okay? We don't want people, we don't want to do the same things every day, so people know what we're doing, okay? So security is not just having an officer at the front door, security guards at the front door for certain locations, same time, same place, every day, so. Just to let, like I said, let people know, that's the number-one priority of the school work and this administration, save, save the other kids. Reference to Luke, okay? No, other comments, you know, close schools down. Listen, we're, we're pro- you know, proactive. As soon as we see a couple of kids gone, maintenance, thank you, maintenance, for cleaning, okay? You know what? My kid was sick three days, he stayed home. But no, unfortunately, some people get sick, they don't realize how sick they are, come to school, touching each other. It's, it's going to happen. But no, we're proactive. Maintenance was scrubbing before school, after school, during school. All right, so thank you, maintenance. I'd also like to thank guidance counselors. I know it's a crazy time of the year, seniors, okay? The seniors looking for transcripts and all the novyons and, you know, everything they need for college and so. Mr. Brandis, thank the guidance there for us. Our Students of the Month. You guys see some of these kids' grade, grade-point averages. You know, they, there are fours, some are above fours, four, five, four fours. These kids aren't just studying in school, they're playing sports. Mr. Glatia, wrestling, you know how much time they practice wrestling? And to be a Student of the Month, that's great accomplishment. I, I believe Sophia is number-one in her class, so, you know, it's not just these kids staying home and studying. They're volunteering, they're playing sports. So, you know, everyone's like, "Ah, grades are down, this and that." You know, we have two, two kids that have been accepted to Miami, we got kids going to Penn State, we got kids, no, we should have a list of kids when we get all the acceptances, where, where they go. You know, some people badmouth our, you know, schools, teachers, they're doing a hell of a job. And no, it's just not doing your stuff here. No, it's parenting, too. You know, everything starts at home. So, other than that, let's see, what do we got under finance? Budget, our business office working the tails off, trying to cut, trying to save wherever we could. Contracts, uh, yeah, I don't need that. Thanks anyhow. We got all contracts, we're working on all contracts, and like Mr. DeGeorge said, you know, we're trying to save money. Our biggest expense is benefits. You know, we're trying to save money the best we could, so we're working with our brokers, bringing in new things, you know, trying, you know, we're, we're trying the best we could, so. With that on finance, we've got progress, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Downey?
Hi. First of all, I'd like to comment and congratulate our fourth graders who did these two covers this month. Every month, I look forward to, as former elementary principal, I really look forward to the artwork that these kids do, and today is exceptional. Very nice job. I also want to comment, if you have a chance to go out this door and make a write, there is a showcase from the Fine Arts Department with sculptures in the showcase. Sculptures made out of plastic spoons, straws, Q-tips, pencils, they are so good. So if you get a chance, just go down and look at it. Really nice job. I want to congratulate the Seniors of the Month. Luke, he's pursuing engineering degree, and he was accepted U.S. Merchant Marines, wonderful accomplishment. Sophia, first in her class, and like Mr. Marandy said, the GPAs are unbelievable here. Votek, David Costantina, and I have a challenge for you, David. I want you to design clothes for women over 60 that don't look like we're 65, 70. So that's your challenge. Thank you. Unsung Hero, Blake, congratulations. What a positive attitude, reading his summary about Blake, it was really good. And that's always the unsung heroes. I love that award, because it's those people that always don't look for acknowledgement, but they're always there and helping. So, nice job. I want to thank Lacey's finest, and we have two up in the back right now. We have Lieutenant Sullivan and Detective SRO May. Thank you for everything you do. Your presence in our buildings just make, just comforted everyone, just to see you there. So thank you for everything, and thank you to the whole department for being so proactive and working with us so closely. And Red Night Out, I hope everyone can make it. It is a wonderful night, and I'm looking forward to seeing who's going to be in there with Frankie, whether it's Mr. DeBlas or Regina is. Oh, I'm sorry, Nick said that you're going to be in there, no? Now, curriculum, I have a lengthy, and I'll make it as quick as I can. We had a curriculum meeting on February 6th, myself, Dave Seletti, Mr. Claus was the alternate, and Dr. Clark. We went over the New Jersey School Performance Report, and she provided the committee with an overview and an analysis of the whole report, which was recently released to the public. In addition to the analysis, Dr. Clark shared that a district focuses on improving academic performance in math in grades five through 12. So the following strategies were briefly discussed. In the current school year, Algebra I instruction is being delivered every day at the high school for all students enrolled in an Algebra I class. Previously, with the block schedule, they were receiving it every other day, and which coincided with the Navy and Cardinal Days. But now, to improve our math scores, math is every day, Algebra I, every day. In the current school year, we're also using newly purchased Algebra I materials that are aligned with the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. We also have new course materials from, from Big Ideas, it's been budgeted for Geometry and Algebra II for next year. The district is in year-four implementation of the new elementary math program in Vision 2.0. We're looking forward to seeing how high our scores improve after these students have been in this program for a couple of years. And we have budgeted, hopefully it'll stay in the budget, for two academic math coaches for the 2018, 2019 school year. Oftentimes, as a board, that's one area that we hear from the public that needs to be improved so much, and we are putting our heart and soul into improving those math scores. Also, well, tonight, you heard Ms. Bo Kachin, Kam, present the First T National School Program Grant, so looking forward to that. That should be very interesting for the Phys Ed department and the kids. Mr. Wiggly mentioned CUSAC. We got the report back that it is, we are a high-performing district. Dr. Clark presented to several schools in Ocean County, the College Academy presentation, along with Dr. Clark, Mr. Zalinski, and Guidance Counselor Ms. Chikaron and...
Perpera.
Okay, so other school districts are looking at our academy to see how well we're doing and how we're doing it. We talked about new high school courses for next year. We also talked about Option Two. That's for when students are in these, the College Academy College Associates Program, that instead of taking Phys Ed, they'll do an alternate program. We talked also about eliminating quality points. The committee discussed the elimination of quality bonus points, which was implemented when the high school moved to a block schedule. The purpose of the implementation was to provide students with incentive to 40 credits each year. However, this created an unfair advantage that affected rank, so we are eliminating the quality points. We discussed out-of-state travel, we talked about self-insurance for the Chromebooks that are issued to our students every year. And Dr. Clark shared that the program called Lifelines, a suicide prevention program, that will be implemented in the high school health classes. And that is the end of my report. Sorry it took so long.
That was good stuff, thank you.
Yeah, there is a lot of good stuff.
It wasn't. That was the first curriculum meeting I ever sat in on. I'm probably a little long.
It was.
It was good one, that. I learned a lot. Mr. Giordano?
Thank you. President Claus. We're moving right, right down the line here. Just to reiterate what everybody else has been talking about this evening, congratulations to Luke, Sophia, Blake, and David. I don't know, David Costantina, Costantina? Costantina? It just sounds like the Fall Collection by Costantina, right? You get that, right?
Yeah, really, yeah. Women over 60.
And certainly, it's certainly, you know, two very good institutions in the U.S. Marine Merchant Academy and Stevens Institute. Again, students that represent, represent the finest that Lacey has to offer. The water stations from the science teachers and all the, actually, all the teachers that participated in that, you know, you write grants on weekends, or you do work on weekends, and, and we get to benefit from awesome water coolers that our students can enjoy water and faculty can enjoy water. So we really appreciate you going out and taking that extra time to do that. That's great work, so thank you very much. I'm going to keep it short, two other things. We talked about Alice tonight, and we mentioned the two officers that are sitting up in the back. I, I got to see firsthand the partnership and the way that this school administration works very closely with the police department. And I don't know how long you guys practiced that together, but when you sat in this class and they delivered this program, one person speaking, then a police officer speaking, it was like they practiced it. I mean, they, it was just awesome to see them really work together. But it just goes to show that the communication between the superintendent, the chief of police, and the level of partnership that the schools have with our police department is second to none, so that's awesome, and I wanted to just make notice of that. And then finally, Ms. Russell, you know, you're, you're one parent that came out and spoke tonight, and you, you saw what happened. You had a lot of questions, you had a lot of anxiety, you had a lot of concerns, and you heard it from us here tonight, that we are doing everything that we can to address some of the issues. So I'm, I'm not calling you out in a bad way, don't get nervous. I really wish there's more parents like you that come out and be involved, so I really want to commend you for coming out and speaking your mind tonight. It, it definitely means a lot to this board that we get this kind of participation. And then I want to point out two new members of the community, but two new members of the community that came out tonight that want to be involved. I think the people in this town need to come out and be involved, and, and, you know, continue to pull people in and get them to these meetings, because this is where you get the right information, not on social media. And then lastly, Red Night Out, I've been to a couple of them, they're great events. We should get everybody... We should get everybody in this community out to that event, and so, talk to your friends, talk to your neighbors, and let's make this the largest Red Night Out attendance that we've had. With that, I'll conclude my remarks.
Thank you very much. Mr. deBlass.
Yeah, Ms. Russell, thank you for speaking up. I mean, I have two children, and my daughter's seven years old, and I think I can speak for everyone when I say these things that are happening, it's infuriating, and it's very upsetting, and it's heartbreaking, you know, and when you have kids, you truly understand, so. And thank you to the teachers for showing up every day through all this madness. It's tough times, you know? And congratulations to the Students of the Month. And as far as the Red Night Out, I'm excited about this, you know? I grew up in a home where my father was a severe drug addict and alcoholic. I've had friends die of overdose. I've seen a lot, you know, and family members overdose and die. I travel the world, and I speak all over the place, I teach Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu all over the world, and I get paid pretty good to do it, you know? And as soon as I was asked to do this in my own community, it's something that I jumped on because it's so important. And I feel that everything ties in, you know? Nowadays, every kid is so desensitized to everything, like you could find anything on the internet, it's crazy. I remember growing up, I wasn't, I'm thirty-five years old, I wasn't exposed to nearly half of the things that children are exposed to nowadays. And this drug thing is a huge problem, man. I mean, it's a huge problem. Like I said, I teach in town, and I see what happens, and I find so often, things are just overlooked, you know? This whole vaping problem with weed now, you know? Every kid has a vape, and it's just accepted. I promise you, more kids are gonna continue to die, you know, if this isn't attacked. And when I say attacked, I truly mean attacked. I see firsthand what it does to families, I've seen firsthand what it does to friends, and it's brutal, you know, it's brutal. And I believe the school violence, I believe the drugs, I believe all these things are tied in, you know? And I think the biggest thing we need to bring is awareness. I think so many people are afraid to speak out. If there's a child that seems like something's wrong, it doesn't mean that, you know, we're a bully if we tell a teacher, or we tell, you know, a principal, maybe something's wrong with this child, maybe they need a little help. Furthermore, the bullying that happens online, social media, these kids can't get away. So, it's kind, it's terrible, because most of these kids that are doing these things, they're angry, they're angry children, they're angry kids, and they feel that their only answer is to come in and shoot up a school. And that's just terrible, right? It's terrible for everybody, so. I think the more awareness we have, the more people that come and that are involved in the community, you know, the better it is, and it starts with us, you know, it starts with us, so. As far as the Red Night Out, I hope everybody can make it, it's gonna be a good, man, me and Frankie together, I promise you one thing, like, you're gonna laugh, for sure. And I really did mean that, I could put him in my pocket, I wasn't gonna say that. So, thank you, everyone, for coming out, and through these tough times, man, you know, like, everybody, of course, we always gotta sit together, so, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. In place of, Mr. Seletti, would you mind giving us some policy?
Yeah, with policy minutes, and I just do want to point out also for Red Night Out, I know we've been talking to Ms. Scanlon, is that, Mr. Brandis, that our spring sports athletics, that's gonna be practiced that night with their coaches, so, we may need a lot of pizza, and we expect a big crowd. I would love to say, I keep saying I'm nervous about the auditorium, I want it to be a problem, and say, oh, we don't have enough seats. Then we won't, then we, then we did, we did a great job, so, hopefully it's packed out the doors, and I look forward to that night. Policy agenda, there's a few policies that, when we do policy reviews, just so you know, most, everything comes from an agency that reviews, it's all based off law, and then it's converted into policy, which we have to create into actions, in both for our students, our staff, and the board itself. One of the policies that's on there is boards, board members' use of social networks. That's board members on Facebook and social media, we talked a little about appropriate use, and I, you know, it's not an issue here, but there's actually a policy on it, and it's a new policy. So, that was adopted by the board. Several policies that were revised were in regards to staff attendance and improvement plans for improving staff attendance, support staff attendance and improving that. Also, our high school transcripts, there was small language, most of it is language where they take pupil to student, and they revise the policy because the law changes and dictates changes in it. One of the bigger ones that we do have, and this deals with Chief Development of Lacy Township Police, is electronic surveillance of school buildings and grounds. We have, you know, there's a requirement that if you have cameras in your buildings, that the, that your local law enforcement can view those cameras, so, we have a memorandum of understanding with the chief of police on when and who can view those cameras, but it would be, unfortunately, in a very difficult situation that they would have to access. We also have a school safety officer, which is going to be shortly adopted by the state of New Jersey, and that will be Dr. Clark, representing Lacy Township School Districts, will encompass all of our safety protocols, programs tied into reporting to the state, so, there will be training for her this spring, she's very excited to do that, she's been part of our safety initiatives all along, so, that will be another important facet of her many tasks. Student tracking devices, there's a policy on here that was revised, it's regarding the students turning on their GPS in school and tracking themselves, or turning it on and being able to be, you know, find my phone, but I'm walking around the building. So, there's a little bit of that that talks about when it's appropriately used and not. So, you'll see some of the policies are mostly revised. The new ones come on alerts from the state of New Jersey and from Strauss Esme, our service, where we have to revise them. Some of them are mandated, some of them are optional. Most everything that we work on first in a triage form is that we do the mandates first, and then if we can get to all the recommended ones, we do those. Mr. Brandis presented during policy, a waiver process for students that have long-term suspensions, as opposed to having board hearing, board hearing, board hearing, to permit those students that are suspended long-term to go into either a rehab program, seek mental health services rather than coming before the board constantly and being told you're suspended again in another two weeks. So, that process streamlined some of our suspensions and gets some of our students that need the most resources out for a period of time to experience those. And that's important, because I, one thing I know that everyone's talking about is mental health, but it is truly a challenge. Schools, and schools are home away from home. We are armed with student assistance counselors, we do have school psychologists, we have social workers, but we are not a therapeutic environment. Sometimes we triage, make recommendations, but we're seeing, not just in Lacy, but across the country and society with the changes Mr. deBlass mentioned on what's out there, is we're battling, you know, decades of change in culture, climate, different dynamics in families, it's just a different structure, and it's really putting, at times, a strain on our capacity to address all the needs of our students, especially those that are struggling. But it is a task that, you know, we're passionate towards, and that we're gonna stay on task for, so I just want you to know that, that that's a continuous effort from all of us, but it is an ever-present challenge moving forward, so. That's all I have, and thank you, Mr. Claus.
Thank you. All right. I guess just to kind of echo a lot of the comments, you know, Students of the Month, Unsung Hero, congratulations. Congratulations to Jerry and Angelo on their, Angela on their citizenship. It was nice to see the emotion, the excitement they had, and how happy they were. We're lucky to have them. And also the grants, too. It's awesome work. I wish we could get as many of those grants as possible. One thing I did want to mention, too, was, I don't know if people know this, but we had, we hosted the district wrestling tournament at Lacy last week. It was a pretty good turnout. We did, in the end, we had six of our wrestlers that moved on to the region, regional tournament, which will be in Thomas River this week. Of those six, four of them got first place. I think that's the most we've ever had at one time, which is, yeah, it's incredible, so, if we could continue to cheer those folks on. I've just started to go to these wrestling matches, I'm learning the sport, I don't know it that well. But one thing I do notice is that the wrestlers really appreciate it when people come to see them. You know, a lot of times they wrestle, and there's not many people in the room watching or supporting, so, anybody that can get out and make it, please do. They'll be wrestling again this week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, in Thomas River, so, look it up and show up if you can, support our folks. If they win here, I believe they end up in Atlantic City wrestling for the States next, so, which is huge. And that is all that I have, too. We can move on to the fun stuff, new business. Can I get a motion for A, one through nineteen?
One second.
Thank you. Roll.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes, except, abstain from nine, five, three, five, five, nine?
On the bills list, yes, thank you. Mr. deBlass.
Yes, abstain, the same as he said.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes, and I'm going to abstain on bills number nine, five, zero, four, five, zero, bill number five, two, zero, three, zero, zero, and bill number nine, five, three, two, one, five. Everything else is a yes.
Thank you. Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Thank you.
B, donations, can I have a motion?
Move.
Second. Roll.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes, thank you, everyone, for all the donations, thank you.
Mr. deBlass.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Seletti. Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Downing.
Yes, thank you very much.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Claus.
Yes, thank you very much.
C, programs and curriculum, you get a motion?
Move.
Second. Roll.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mr. deBlass.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
D, professional days and workshops.
Move.
Second.
Roll.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mr. deBlass.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes, and I have to abstain of an S and P Clark.
Thank you. Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
E, certificated personnel, one through twelve.
Move.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. deBlass.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes, and congratulations on their retirements.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes, and congratulations to the advanced degrees by three of our teachers, masters to thirty, plus thirty.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
F, non-certificated personnel, one through six.
Move.
Second.
Roll.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mrs. deBlass.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Oh, and do we have a couple extras?
Yes, sir, we have three, what we call walk-on resolutions. Walk-on resolution number one, motion, move that the board accept the resignation of staff member number eight, five, five, six, three, eight, effective April twenty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Move.
Second. Roll.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mr. deBlass.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Walk-on resolution number two, substitute nurse daily rate, move that the board approve an increase in the daily rate for contracted substitute nurses who work in district more than ten consecutive days from one hundred thirty dollars to one hundred fifty-five dollars.
Motion.
Move.
Second. Roll.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mrs. deBlass.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
And finally, walk-on resolution number three, reinstatement of staff member, move that the board approve the reinstatement of staff member ID eight, five, five, three, one, six, pending successful completion of New Jersey Criminal History Review.
Move.
Second.
Roll.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes, and welcome back.
Mr. deBlass.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
That's all I have.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I just want to announce that the March nineteenth Board of Ed meeting will begin at five forty-five, and the purpose of that start time will provide a trainer from the New Jersey School Boards Association to do a training for the board for the purpose of learning the new process for evaluation of the CSA, the superintendent. So, just so you know, it's gonna be an exciting, probably half-hour presentation, and I'm sure that the board will benefit from learning that process, just so the public knows. Thank you very much, and that is it. Motion to adjourn, I'm sorry.
Move.
Second. Aye.
Aye. Aye.